All right then. Calling to order, the South River Mayor and Borough Council, meeting number nineteen today on December the eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-three. Meeting is hereby called to order. I have the statement of notice of publication. Madam Clerk?
In compliance with Chapter two thirty-one, a public law of nineteen seventy-five, notice of this meeting to be held at the Criminal Justice Building, sixty-one Main Street, South River, has been published in the Home News Tribune on January sixth, two thousand and twenty-three, posted on the Municipal Building Bulletin Board, the Borough website, the front door of the Criminal Justice Building at sixty-one Main Street, South River.
Thank you. Roll call.
Mayor Krenzel?
Here.
Councilwoman Ballas?
Here.
Councilman Gortenski?
Here.
Councilwoman Mira?
Here.
Councilman Olivera?
Here.
Council President Seula?
Here.
Please stand for the salute to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing from all silence. Please be seated. We unfortunately must go into executive session now because we will be discussing some matters that are on the agenda, so we will come back after that and have our usual run of the meeting. Madam Clerk?
Resolution two thousand and twenty-three, three six, three forty-six, whereas Section eight of Chapter two thirty-one, Public Law of nineteen seventy-five, permits the exclusion of the general public from a meeting of the governing body under certain circumstances, and whereas the mayor and council of the Borough of South River are of the opinion such circumstances presently exist. Now therefore be it and is hereby resolved by the mayor and council of the Borough of South River and the County of Middlesex of the state of New Jersey that the public be excluded upon the here and after a specific subject matter, and that such subject matter to be so discussed is as follows: litigation, contract negotiations. Be it further resolved that such record of the above discussion will be made public when confidentiality is no longer required.
Thank you. Pleasure on the resolution?
Move the resolution.
Resolution has been moved by Mrs. Ballas.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Seula. Roll call.
Councilwoman Ballas? Councilman Gortenski?
Yes.
Councilwoman Mira?
Yes.
Councilman Olivera?
Yes.
Council President Seula?
Yes.
Okay, we shall return. Ballis seconded by Mr. Olivera. All in favor?
Aye.
Against the eyes have it. Moving on to our regular agenda, as we have reconvened to the public session, we have the agenda session. Two things to discuss. Mr. Zanga, bond anticipation notes?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. We had our annual bond anticipation note. We received an interest rate of four point five percent. Also received the premium, which gave us a net interest rate of three point seven nine three, which is a very good rate. That's it.
This day and age, yes it is. Do we have to do anything with this? No?
Just be mentioned.
Okay. Vacant council seat.
Mayor, if I may, just on this agenda, one, I'd like to call for a special meeting on December the twenty-seventh, two thousand and twenty-three, at seven P.M., here at the Public Safety Building, sixty-one Main Street, South River, New Jersey.
Okay.
Okay.
When Mr. Gindy resigned from the council, the Republican Organization had fifteen days to present three names. They have done so. The council has officially received those three names, and there will be a special meeting on December twenty-seventh.
Twenty-seventh, yep.
Okay, and there will be a special meeting on the twenty-seventh. I'll call for it, and it will be discussed at that time.
Mr. Mayor, I'm sorry. Just a point of order. Are you calling for it, or is Council President calling for it? Because if Council President's calling for it, I believe council rules requires a vote of council members, so if you would just take--
Well, it's been suggested, so I would call for it.
Oh, you're gonna call for it, then? Okay, then that's fine. Then if, if, Mr. Mayor, if you could just send out your letter advising council, I would appreciate it. Thank you.
Very good, then. We use the, that that's done? Okay. Ordinances, second reading by, second reading, public hearing, two thousand and twenty-three dash thirty-one. Madam Clerk?
Ordinance two thousand and twenty-three dash thirty-one, an ordinance of the Borough of South River, County of Middlesex, State of New Jersey, amending the Borough Code of the Borough of South River, so as to amend Chapter twenty-two, entitled Boards, Commissions, and Authorities.
And somebody will waive their full reading?
Oh, make a motion to waive the full reading. Sorry about that.
Second.
Okay. Motion to waive the full reading by Mr. Seula, seconded by Mrs. Ballas. All in favor?
Aye.
Against the eyes have it. We'll now have a public hearing on this ordinance concerning boards, commissions, and authorities. Please come forward, give your name, address, and you can ask any questions or make any comments on first call, second call.
Richard Byrne, eleven to set place. I would just like to say thank you for acting on this request. We had, on the Environmental Commission, we had inadvertently appointed someone who was a Saint John Vienni-Poldell student, who technically wasn't eligible, and this will now, any resident who's a, you know, a high school student will be in. So that's, thank you for acting on this.
Okay, very good, sir. Again, first call, second call, third call.
Make a motion to close public.
Motion has been made to close by Mr. Seula, seconded by Mr. Gortenski. All in favor?
Aye.
Against the eyes have it. Your pleasure on the ordinance.
The ordinance.
The ordinance has been moved by Mrs. Ballas.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Gortenski. Discussion? Roll call.
Councilwoman Ballas?
Yes.
Councilman Gortenski?
Yes.
Councilwoman Mira?
Yes.
Councilman Olivera?
Yes.
Council President Seula?
Yes.
Okay. The motion to adopt has been accepted and passed, and now we move to two thousand and twenty-three dash thirty-two. Madam Clerk?
Ordinance two thousand and twenty-three thirty-two, an ordinance of the Borough of South River, County of Middlesex, State of New Jersey, authorizing the sale of Block one oh five, Lot eighteen point zero one, to Charmaine Larkin and Jess Buffalino, in accordance with the provisions NJSA forty-eight colon twelve dash thirteen.
Make a motion to waive the full reading.
Second.
Motion to waive the full reading by Mr. Seula, seconded by Mr. Gortenski. All in favor?
Aye.
Against the eyes have it. If anyone wishes to come forward, please do so now to discuss or ask any questions upon this matter. Please give your name and address on first call, second call, third call.
Motion to close public.
Motion to close by Mr. Seula, seconded by Mrs. Ballas. All in favor?
Aye.
Against the eyes have it. Moving on to our reports. Finally got here, so.
Yes, good evening, everyone. Not a lot of change in the report, but I'll go through it. The two thousand and twenty-three local aid program, we're working on that design. The two thousand and twenty-three local transportation projects grant, where we submitted application waiting to hear from the D.O.T. The two thousand and twenty-four local aid program, we submitted a proposal for that. You received a grant, and we submitted a proposal for the engineering work on that to you. The two thousand and twenty-four local transportation projects, you haven't submitted for that. You have until June of next year, so if there are any roads that you would like to, please let us know. On the substation, we held the pre-construction meeting. We issued the contracts and the notice to proceed. And the New Jersey D.P.'s Stormwater Assistance Grant application, they have taken elevation or taken the locations of most of the catch bases. Now they're working on some of the mapping. And that is it. I will answer any questions you may have.
I have a question, Bruce.
Yes.
Um, I, we do have here that we're gonna be authorizing for the, um, the engineering services for, um, Grekowsky Park feasibility study. I just was wondering what that entails on your part for the study.
It's really in the hands of our Environmental Division. It will be to go out there, review the area, determine if there are wetlands or any other environmental constraints. If so, locate them. Our survey department will go out and do a survey of those points, and that will be put on a map so we can determine what land is constrained and what land is available to be able to build upon.
Okay. That's all I have.
Anyone else? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Mr. Zanga?
Nothing to report.
Nothing, nothing today? Okay. And we have two there, nothing for our police? Okay, clerk?
Nothing.
Okay. Legal?
I have nothing tonight, ma'am.
BA? No? Okay. Did I miss somebody with fire? Fire?
Nothing.
Nothing? Oh, that's right. Congratulations. Yes, our new chief.
Moving us?
Yeah, that's right. So. Anything, Mr. BA? No? Okay. Uh, let's see, since I wanna end, I will start here. Mrs. Mayor, anything?
Um, for my committees, I just wanna say, the Environmental Commission will have their last meeting this week, on Thursday. We have a very strong group of volunteers on the Environmental Commission, the Green Team, the Shade Tree. I just wanna thank everybody for all the time they spent coming out and improving South River the way they do. I hope that everyone who is on now continues to serve at their capacity. I'm not sure whose terms end this year, but I'm almost positive they would all like to continue to serve South River the best they can. So I just wanna thank them for all their hard work and dedication. Like you guys see, Richard Byrne is here at almost all of our meetings, as well as being the chair of the Environmental Commission, so I thank him for all the time that he spends here. For the library, I just wanna mention that they will be open during the winter break if any of the kids wanna get stuff done or hang out at the library. They always have new stuff, new movies, new audiobooks, new games, even hotspots to rent if you, to, um, to use at home if you need it, so please stop at the library until the end of the year, especially if it gets cold out and you want something to do, so a good book is always enjoyable. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Gortenski?
Thank you, Mayor. The only thing I have is that the Office on Aging had their Christmas party at the Ria Mar, and affair was enjoyed by all. That's about it, Mayor. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Olivera.
So from a Parks and Rec perspective, we have basketball, cheerleading, and wrestling that are underway. Our cheerleading teams will have their first competition, I believe, January sixth, if I'm not mistaken.
January sixth.
In Mott Vale. Wrestling had their first comp, uh, match already, and basketball, they have started practicing. Some exciting things that are coming up from a rec perspective. We're currently going after two grants. One is through Green Acres, which would help with walking paths at Daley's Pond. Once we get the, the funds from, that Councilwoman Mira was able to get from us, that's gonna be able to help the field finish the cameras, the back net, and then this grant, if we hopefully get, will assist with the walking path. In addition to that, we're also going after a grant for inclusive playground equipment. This grant will cover seventy-five percent of the total cost of the project, so we had a great meeting with Ben Schaefer to discuss different sites, but this also requires community engagement. We hosted our first public hearing to, let's talk about Parks and Rec, but we only had one individual show up. We will be doing some more during the new year, and we will be also releasing a survey for the residents to give us some input on, on what we can, uh, not what we can and can't do, but what is recommended and what they would like to see at the different parks. So again, as Councilwoman Mira mentioned, I wanna thank, uh, Mr. Byrne and the, the Green Team, Shade Tree, everyone that attended. This grant requires input from you guys, and I just wanna thank you guys for showing up and providing that. And we'll let you guys know when our next hearing is. All right? That's all I have, ma'am.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Seula?
Nothing, nothing to report.
Okay, Mrs. Ballas?
I have nothing at this time.
Okay, well, I'll talk later on there, too. Let's see. Moving on, let's, new, public comments. If you have anything you'd like to say, please come forward. You have ten minutes. Give your name and address.
Richard Byrne, eleven to set place. I wanted to talk about the Senior Fix-It Program. Back in two thousand and eleven, Atlantic County implemented a Senior Fix-It Program. And I had, fortunate enough to be able to volunteer a couple of times for that, and it was one of the most rewarding things I got to do down there. And so to see that you're, that you're gonna put one in here in the borough, I'm just, I can't tell you how satisfied it is, and that Jim Hutchinson is a great guy to, to run that program, so I thank you for, for doing that. I was gonna say to Mrs. Mira that, you know, your last meeting, well, actually, you'll be here--
Thursday.
But I'll say, you know, it was a pleasure working with you on the Environmental Commission. I'll still get to see you because I'm gonna come for haircuts.
Yeah.
But, in fact, I'm gonna ask tomorrow, but, um, and, you know, we'd love to see you come out for events again in the future. For Mayor Krenzel, I was going to prepare remarks, but if things go the way I think they're gonna go, we're gonna get you back, so I'm gonna reserve those comments for the, for the, for the first, so.
Okay.
Uh, thank you. And that's it. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else?
Dan Canell, under court. Um, I just have a couple of comments, just, uh, this is my, well, I guess since the first time that I came, which was about six months ago, when I introduced myself the first time, that's when the water issue was first brought up, and I'd be remiss if we didn't bring it up again today because it should be brought up at this single time. I know you guys are still working on it at some, some level. We're unknown of what the entire plan is, is, as residents, but with that being said, I've been watching, so that, for the, um, meetings that I haven't been here, I have been watching them on YouTube, and the two meetings ago, I was a little taken back by the remarks by you, Mr. Mayor, when you gave the little speech about the man in the arena. And yes, this is not a, you know, this job probably goes a lot without being, you know, pat on the back. It's kind of thankless, probably in many aspects, and I understand that, but if you've taken this job to receive and seek out pats on the back, then maybe you've taken this job for the wrong reasons. I listened to what you talked about for Sandy. I already lived here at the time, but it sounds like your administration and your city did outstanding work for that. But what you have not done is taken care of the residents and the water issue. You knew about it in two thousand and nineteen. There was a report that was done sometime in ninety-eight. You know, we, you know, Mr. Olivera points out, you know, we shouldn't point fingers about which administration here or which administration when. Point is, you were the leader for the last twelve years. The infrastructure is what it is, far worse than it was twelve years ago, and I'm sure a lot more expensive to repair today than it was twelve years ago. Social media is not the place. I don't agree with that being the sole source of people to voice their concerns and complaints, but there's probably a reason why people do that. Before I started coming here, I heard from other residents, the council doesn't care. They're not gonna respond. They're not gonna change. They don't reply. I still haven't received an email back from you six months ago. A little disappointing. I brought that up to you six months ago when I was here. So that's one outlet that those, the residents go to. It's pretty sad that we come here and these seats are empty. Why is that? What interaction? I don't know. I'm not out there with you guys, but what interaction are you doing with the residents to encourage them to come here and voice the good things you're doing? It's not everything's bad. I wanna, I wanna preface that. Not everything is bad that you're doing, but there are things that need to be improved that leaders should stand up to do. Hold people accountable. So many meetings that I've listened to, and you ask questions of this gentleman here. I don't know. I don't know. We're waiting for this. I don't know. How is that okay? It's not. So moving forward into two thousand and twenty-four, for those of you that will be here, the new mayor that'll be here, I encourage you, listen to your residents, go on the social media and preview. You can read through the lines, what, what's legitimate, what's not, but be responsive. Be responsive. Take accountability. Own up to your failures. Your successes will follow. Learn from your failures. Your successes will follow. As a platoon sergeant in the military police corps, I wasn't the most liked guy, but I knew every night what I did at the end of that day. I could put my head on my pillow, go to sleep well, because I did right by the people that I was with. And that's all I ask of you. Thank you.
Anyone else on first call?
Good evening. Suppressed time for me here.
Your name, address?
Oh, I'm sorry. My name's Sam Twal. I live, I own sixty-eighth and sixty-seventh Coaseville Street, and about the water, talking about the flood, I'm losing every, my shirt, because when I bought it, they told me, oh, sometime comes, sometime goes, you know? Well, I spend all my money as a cash. I pay all the taxes, behind taxes, Mr. Freight, I mean towing, where they own back taxes, I paid all the, but I'm not getting no service, no garbage collected. My water bill up to the sky, nobody knows. They come read the, the meters, oh, that's from two thousand and nineteen, but they say I wasn't there, two thousand and nineteen, but you follow. I say, why don't you give me the bill? Every month I receive it. Say, well, you have to for your mail, but the mailman doesn't come because the water flooded. That's my problem now. Cost me over fifty thousand dollars the past, maybe five months of flooding cars and trucks, and the cops, they are good, they're doing job. They come give us the tickets because they're parking the side, because on the street, and there's no sign saying no trucks, no commercial. They come, they put piece of paper on it, no trucks allowed. Fine, and I see a lot of trucks come from different town or different place parked there. That's, they're supposed to be ticketed, but they ticket the trucks that were in front of my shop, or they tow it, and that's my problem, sir.
You're, I'm trying, you've got several different problems in there.
My problem is the, the water flood. Anything about it, we're gonna do something about it. You guys, I mean, I call up the county, the county said, oh, the town, the town, I'm just going around the circle, and the water is not going any better.
The problem is, is that the river flows.
Yeah, but--
And it comes up.
The sewer line is clogged. The water goes, but come back. Actually, you see live fish in the street. You see live fish in the street because the sewer line is clogged. It's like cement. It's normally cleaned. It's supposed to be digged out, come out, replaced it. This will be done to be concerned by the water.
I think we've complained in the past. Has the county ever come out to clean the sewers?
I know.
Oh.
They do good job from the bank. They come, they did great job. I asked you, wanna do the same thing with our sewer right here? Say, no, it's not on our map to do it. I said, but this is a town, I mean, county streets. It's not a town. That's the answer, sir.
Well, for the project for two thousand and twenty-four, write them a letter and ask them, when are they going to come in two thousand and twenty-four to clean out the sewers? Leave your, uh, address with him, and he will CC you a copy of that letter.
Thank you, sir.
And I'll bring this up at the next county commissioner meeting, because I, I tend to go to those, so I, I will speak on this next time.
Clean the sewer is never gonna be a problem. They have to take it out because it's cement. It's a clog. The water goes, but it's no valve to, to clog it to go back. The water is supposed to be smooth going out, doesn't come back.
Yeah. Okay.
Thank you.
Grab your project. Close away. Anyone else? First call? Second call? Third call?
Close public portion.
Motion has been made to close public portion by Mr. Seula, seconded by Mrs. Ballas. All in favor?
Aye.
Against the eyes have it. Moving on to new business, there is no new business. Then we come down to our governing comments. We will start with Mrs. Ballas.
May I?
Ah, you're right.
Mayor, if I may, could I ask for, uh, Resolution three fifty-one to be read separately?
I have a flooded basement, so I'm in a hurry to leave.
Okay. Madam Clerk?
Whereas Resolution two thousand and twenty-three oh one authorizes the Borough Council to utilize a consent agenda to adopt various resolutions of a routine and non-controversial nature at one time, now therefore be it and is hereby resolved that the below-listed resolutions are hereby adopted by the Borough Council in whole, as if the same were individually acted upon. Consent Resolutions two thousand and twenty-three, three forty-seven to two thousand and twenty-three, three fifty-nine. Three forty-seven authorize the requisition of funds for payment to the custodian of school monies. Three forty-eight authorizing the cancellation of all balances less than ten dollars. Three forty-nine authorizing CME to provide engineering services for Grekowsky Park feasibility study. Three fifty, authorizing a stipend for the implementation of the fix-it repair program. Three fifty-two canceling unexpended improvement of our authorizations. Three fifty-three authorize certain utility refunds. Three fifty-four, resolution authorizing the carryover buyback. Three fifty-five, approval of agreement with South River Sewer and Water Association. Three fifty-six, transfer of year two thousand and twenty-three budget appropriations. Three fifty-seven, accept December fourth, two thousand and twenty-three regular meeting minutes. Three fifty-eight, authorize the bills and claims list. And three fifty-nine, resolution appointing council on aging member.
Your pleasure on the ordinances?
What was the consent?
Decisions, resolutions.
Consent.
Okay. Mrs. Ballas, seconded by Mr. Seula. Roll call.
Councilwoman Ballas?
Yes.
Councilman Gortenski?
Yes.
Councilwoman Mira?
Yes.
Councilman Olivera?
Yes.
Council President Seula?
Yes.
Yes, with the extension from three fifty-eight, uh, numbers twenty-three dash zero-two-nine-seven-four, zero-three-one-six-zero, zero-three-one-eight-five, zero-three-two-six-zero, and zero-three-two-six-one.
Okay, now Resolution two thousand and twenty-three, three fifty-one, resolution in support of Assembly Bill number four-five-three-six slash Senate Bill number fifty-three oh, oh, let's see, S three oh four, to establish minimum registered professional nursing staff standards, whereas a one-patient increase in a nurse's workload increased the likelihood of an inpatient death within thirty days of admission by seven percent, and whereas mortality risk decreases by nine percent for ICU patients and sixteen percent for surgery patients with the increase of one FTE RN per patient day. And whereas nurse staffing shortages are a factor in one out of every four unexpected hospital deaths or injuries caused by errors, and whereas a two thousand and twenty-one study published in the American Journal of Infection Control found that each additional sepsis patient per nurse was associated with ninety percent higher odds of in-hospital mortality, and whereas a study of New York hospitals in two thousand and twenty-one showed significant decreases in patient deaths would occur if patient care was limited to a ratio of four patients to one nurse, four thousand three hundred and seventy deaths would have been avoided in New York just among Medicare patients during the two-year study. And whereas understaffing at hospitals, ambulatory surgeries, facilities, and state development centers, and psychiatric hospitals have been demonstrated to be an underlying cause of the current nursing shortage because higher patient assignments create higher levels of job dissatisfaction, burnout, and turnover rates among nurses. State Legislature to adopt Assembly Bill Number 4536 slash Senate Bill Number S304. A copy of the resolution upon its adoption shall be furnished to Senator Patrick Dagnan, Congresswoman Bonnie Watson Coleman, Assemblyman Robert Kara-Binchik, and Assemblyman Sterling Stanley. And a copy of this resolution upon its adoption shall also be furnished to the Governor of the State of New Jersey.
Your pleasure on the resolution.
Move the resolution.
The resolution has been moved by Mrs. Ballas.
Second.
Seconded by Mrs. Mira. Comments?
Councilwoman Ballas.
Yes.
Comments, comments.
Oh, sorry.
Do you want comments?
I just wanted to thank you, Mr. Mayor, for being able to put this on the agenda. As we saw at our last meeting, we do have a lot of nurses who live in South River and supporting something as easily as safe staffing is much appreciated, both to them and to us, as we use the hospitals, you know, when we need it. So, we're happy to help them when they need it.
Yes, I entirely concur. That's why I put it on, definitely, I mean, what was it, four months that they were striking there in New Brunswick? I mean, it was ridiculous, but let's see if we can give a little bit of nudge to the people in power. Anyone else? Then roll call.
Councilwoman Ballas.
Yes.
Councilman Gretzky.
Yes.
Councilwoman Mira.
Yes.
Councilman Olivera.
Yes.
Council President Seola.
Yes.
Very good, then. Reading the agenda carefully, we have new business, none. Governing body comments, okay. Mrs. Ballas.
That was me, okay. First, I'd like to thank the Fire and Police for Santa Sunday. I heard it was a success. I saw the trucks going around. I unfortunately had no kids, too. I was cutting into my house. But I heard it was, it was really, really nice. To Councilwoman Mira, it's been a pleasure serving with you. I'm sure you're going to stay involved with the town, and I hope that you do. And I wish you all the best in whatever you do in the future. To the mayor, I've known him for 50 years now. Oh, my God, we're old. And we've been through quite a bit together, lots of won elections, less elections. I appreciate you bringing me through the ranks way back in the day, in the 80s. And you've been a great mentor and a great friend, and I wish you all the best.
Mr. Seola?
Thank you. First, Councilwoman Mira, it was a pleasure serving with you. Good luck on all your future endeavors. And as Mrs. Ballas said, hopefully you still will be around with the environmental and stuff like that, and keep active. I have one thing I'd like to do before, wishing everybody the holidays.
Mayor, if you'd like to, please come forward.
Mayor, on behalf of the council, the Borough of South River, I'd like to present you with a plaque presented to John M. Krenzel, Mayor. Appreciation and recognition for his services rendered to the Borough of South River as Okay, in closing, I'd like to wish everybody a very Merry Christmas and a happy and healthy New Year. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Olivera?
I said my farewell speeches last meeting because I didn't think I was going to be here because of work. So, whatever I said last meeting will carry forward to this meeting, but thank you, Councilwoman Mayor, Mayor Krenzel, for everything. I know there was a special meeting called on the 27th. I will not be here. I will be on vacation with my family. Unfortunately, I don't even think I'll be able to call in because I will be in Puerto Rico, and I don't know where, type of service I'm going to get. So, and with that, you know, I just wanted to wish everyone a Happy Holidays. Again, thank you to the Fire Department and the Police Department. The collaboration with the Grinch and Santa was awesome to see this year. And hopefully, as we mentioned in Public Safety, we're able to continue that. So, thank you guys once again, and then Happy Holidays to everyone.
Thank you. Mr. Gretzky?
Thank you. I think Councilman Olivera said it pretty much all, and I'd like to thank our Police and Fire Department and everything, too, for the showing and the involvement with the community. Also, Robert Wood Johnson. Everyone else on the thing, Councilwoman Olivera, it's been a pleasure working with you.
Councilwoman Olivera.
That's Councilwoman Olivera.
Councilwoman, sorry. With that, I wish everybody a very Happy Holidays and everything. Hanukkah has passed, and Christmas is upon us, and Kwanzaa, and everything else. With that, I thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Mira.
Well, thank you, Mr. Mayor, but before I start, so I'm clarifying, we are having a meeting for December 27th.
Yes.
That's official. We don't vote on it. We're having it. Okay, so this won't be my last meeting. I thought it was going to be my last meeting, but I want to say thank you. Not many of you will miss me, though. I know that, of being up here. But in the last three years, I didn't think I could make any type of difference, being the only Democrat up here against this administration. But I think I was wrong. In my own opinion, I have even thought myself to be the only person to hold you all accountable for certain decisions up here. Now I am leaving, and I hope it's not for a long time. Again, I've got 30 more years to run up here if I'm, if I'm hoping to continue helping this town. So, residents need a voice. You are that voice. You all need to listen a little bit harder. Our infrastructure will not fix itself. Your decisions up here will. So, act like you want to be here. You are here because our residents do believe in what you can do for them. And that is why we hold you accountable so much for the decisions that are made here. I say it for myself as well. I've enjoyed being up here because this job is a privilege. It's not thankless. I think I am thankful every day to be able to serve this community. You're right, we don't need a pat on the back. We appreciate knowing that we make a difference when we can, and I hope to continue to do that eventually. So, I am thankful for the time that I have been up here, and I will continue to serve the community. I have also been asked by Mayor-elect if I'd like to be on any commissions. I'm going to say no because I want you all to continue to allow the people that actually want to volunteer on these boards and commissions to do so. We've seen in the past year that people wanted to be on certain boards that weren't appointed. We should not be turning down any volunteer for South River. South River needs our community to come together. We need the input from all of our residents and show the support from all of our community. So, that doesn't mean I'm going away. I'm sure you guys will hear me plenty from now until next year. And just know that our volunteers are so important to this town, and I hope we continue to let people know to come and serve the borough just like we do. I think everyone has the same goal, and that is to make South River our home. Because I've lived here all my life, most of you have lived here all your lives, and I continue to want to see South River grow. That's why my family's here, that's why I'm not going anywhere. So, I just hope that South River does bring change for the new year, and I hope, you know, we're going to have a meeting, next meeting, to fill a vacant spot. I hope that just means we're going to have more change for the new year, but I guess we will see what happens. Other than that, I just want to say thank you for everyone who allowed me to serve my term for the last three years for the Borough of South River. Other than that, I hope everybody has a safe holiday. Stay warm. I know it's getting windy and chilly, and I hope to see everyone in the new year. Thank you.
There is a long tradition that we've had in South River of gadflies coming to our meetings, and, you know, people usually look down upon them. But to be a true gadfly is to make sure that what goes on up here is done for the right purposes. And that is what you have done. You've kept us on our toes. You've asked the questions. Sometimes we didn't want you to ask those questions, but you asked the questions anyway. And that is what the people who are in, as we say, the loyal opposition is to do, is to make the comfortable uncomfortable to come up and ask the questions, and I hope that you will continue to do so. And you may have somebody there in the, who's also of South River, to come to our meetings and ask questions. And as Mr. Scala would come up here and, you know, I mean, you know, what are you doing that for? 15 years ago, you tried it and it failed then, it's going to fail now. They become the collective memory. People up here change, but the people who sit out there in the audience do not. So, by all means, thank you. And we have something for you, too.
Borough of South River, Middlesex County, New Jersey, presented to Julie R. Mira, in appreciation and recognition for your services to the Borough of South River as a member of the South River Borough Council, 2017 to 2019, and 2021 to 2023.
A few comments from me. Nice to see Santa out yesterday. Good move, doing it early because the storm was coming in.
Came in.
Excellent. Our next official meeting on the calendar will be January 1st, 2024, in the Cafeteria. That's our first meeting of the year. Special meeting on the 27th, should take about 5, 10 minutes. I've talked about, two meetings ago, about the past. Talked about the future at the last meeting. Now I'm going to talk about me. It's been a blast. 12 years, South River's longest-serving mayor. It has been something. First year, baptism by fire with Sandy. Last few years, dealing with COVID. In between, all the craziness and everything else that comes up, the slow realization. I get more comments on Facebook for my food porn than anything else. You know, it's a great town, made better because of the great people who live here. I especially want to thank all those who served during my administration, these 12 years, the professionals that I've gotten to know, Joe Art, Bruce, all of you, Todd, the volunteers, countless volunteers who take their time and effort to come together quietly working to make this town work. Thank you all. Somebody once said it's, you know, we have all the disadvantages of a little town and all the advantages of a little town. We fight, but we come together. One of my favorites was the Ukrainian flag raising. The war had begun. I get a call Friday night, Ukrainians want to raise the flag. We have a place for that. Cut through the red tape. Yes, we can do that. We can raise the Ukrainian flag. Do we have a Ukrainian flag? No. Well, okay, that might be a problem, but within 12 hours, got the Ukrainian flag. And just setting this up on spur of the moment, 200 people showed up. The Belarusians, who do not support their government, who supports the Russians, they came to support the Ukrainian people. The Poles, the other groups that came out. Because when the chips are down, this town does unite, and that's so very important. I, just to borrow from St. Stephen's motto, "South River is a little town with a big heart." I wish you all the best. Please, please, never lose that little-town feel. And so, for the last time, I remind you, lower your chairs. Is there anything else to come before us? Hearing none, may I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Motion by Mr. Seola, seconded by Mr. Olivera. All in favor?
Aye.
All against? We stand adjourned.[1798.88]